She got the drive.
All right, good evening, everybody. It's Tuesday, June 24th, 2014. I'm calling this meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School of Education to our order. May I have a motion to suspend a rule to take a few minutes to acknowledge our colleague, Diane Kinteros.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Second. So we are suspending. And I just want to take a few minutes. This is Diane Kinteros' last meeting as a member of Board Education. And I want to thank you on behalf, not just of my colleagues, but the District for your service. Diane has brought a lot to her work here. She's, I think, we all have seen Diane using her approach to her board service, taking an interest in all aspects of the school district, not only in the ways in which she served, but notably serving on the Finance Committee and Audit Committees, which are often the least fun committees to be on. So when you came on board.
Sorry. I'm trying to be more entertaining.
And spearheading our rigorous Audit Committee, which is, you know, so critical to the functioning of the school district. And it's often a piece that school boards themselves have to really kind of help keep alive as a way that we kind of separate the rules from the rest of the district. So your attention to detail, your commitment to really analyzing all aspects of an issue, you bring to it a unique perspective that's been really important for everyone. It's not, you know, I'll share that it's not always easy to be on the board because there are a variety of issues that have to be dealt with. And certainly, you know, with the work that you do as a doctor, fitting into your schedule and as volunteer service, is really admirable. And as I mentioned last time, even participating via phone a lot because that was the only opportunity you had to really participate. But your dedication has really been evident. And it's been very much appreciated, a good model for all of us. And we'll miss the perspective that you bring to the board. It's been really important and I think helped move us along in a variety of ways through your three years of service. So I have a plaque to present to you. And I really do want to thank you. I think we've all learned from you. And I'll just read this as the Rhinebeck Board of Education Service Award presented to Diane Kinteros in appreciation of your three years of service and dedication to the Rhinebeck Central School District. So thank you, Diane, for your service. Thank you. Just another example of how Diane does squeeze all this in. She has to leave in about five minutes. So thank you. We'll move on now to the rest of our meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes of June 10th, 2014 regular meeting.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Second by Lisa Senni. Just needs to go. Hold those in favor. That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 17th, 2014 special meeting.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Second by Lisa Senni. Hold those in favor. That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have an opportunity now to call a comment. Diane, if you'd like to comment. Yes, Mr. Walker.
I may be the bubble tonight. I was at the kindergarten graduation this morning. And I'm sure that all of you who could have probably been here before, but for the purposes of those who haven't been, I wish you could livestream or something. It's a wonderful event. The entire team is there, the administration, all of the parents, the teachers that foster and mentor these kids. And mostly, of course, the kids, they're little, order boards and caps and gowns. All of them are brought up on stage, they're introduced by name, they all get to walk across this stage and do whatever their parents think is appropriate. Sometimes they think is appropriate. It's a way, some of them maybe do some height and protein type thing. But they get acknowledged and they get recognized. And it's, as you can see this morning, a really wonderful event. And I just want to point out again, if anybody happens to be watching this, that tomorrow is the fifth grade moving up day. And that too is a wonderful event. We held it in this building early on in the morning, so if anybody can come to that, if I can be the cheerleader here, please, everybody come to that.
I'll be there.
Thank you very much for sharing that. That's great. Thank you. Any other members? Well.
I have to get my little.
Oh.
Is it all right?
Please do.
Um, later on in your agenda tonight, 6.6, the motion to recommend that students in the school approve of three new courses in Engineering, Sociology, and Anthropology. First off, I should say to you that I had almost no objectivity on this. These were the courses I taught on that first evening. So I feel strongly about it. I congratulated Mr. Davenport here, Dr. Davenport, on not only the development of those courses, which apparently have come from a lot of different sources, but also in this atmosphere, as you know better than I do, in this atmosphere of tax caps and phrases and Common Core and state standards and all that kind of thing, for them to be looking to expand the offering that they have for those students, really, I mean, support is obviously, it's really a wonderful thing. I can really over support this. And I will try not, for you folks, I will try not to do this often, but right now is my frame of reference in the past, okay? I remember sitting on a board with Dr. David Nulio a lot of years ago. And at the time, Dave Nulio was the, he ran the neonatal intensive care unit down at Bassler Hospital. And whenever this kind of recommendation would come off, he should be the first person to support it because he would always say that these are the courses that keep some kids in school, that there are, of course, the other courses that everybody takes, but when you can offer them other things that turn their light, their fuse, they send them on fire. And the reason he supported it is because he was one of those. His story was that he was about to drop out of school. And he got the chance to take an anthropology course, and that interested him in anatomy, and that interested him in small anatomy, and he eventually got to be involved in neonatal intensive care and kept it in school. So what if those kind of foster words, like, uh, it's a very long, you know, possible to, like, indicate in practice.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you very much for your comments. Definitely, they're valued very much so. Thank you. All right. Well, very good. And we'll move on to our reports and discussion. And our first item is our principal's report. Have you done here?
Good evening, everyone. So a few things happening at Chancellor. I wanted to let you know, I had mentioned the Books Journey last time. On the 20th, we were able to wrap up our authors' visits with something we called Meet the Young Authors. And what that was, was all the fourth grade students. All the fourth grade students had an opportunity to write their own books after going through the whole process, which is, again, I can't say enough, every year we get to do it. Every year I try to find some way of getting involved and seeing a class or watching one of the presentations from the authors and illustrators. This was very cool. And every class had kind of a whole list of authors. We had a lobby full of parents coming in to community members to see the books that kids created. So it was just a wonderful way to wrap that up. And it's just something we do. We do the Books Journey every year, thanks to Arts and Ed Grant. And it's just a wonderful, wonderful thing I wanted to point out. Real quick, K-2 Field Day was this, was Friday, June 6th. We utilized the rain date as well as the rain date for the 3-5 Field Day as well. Both were perfect calls. It was, it was a tough one. The first one, not so much. The second one, we went back and forth at like 5:30 in the morning and made the best call, which is great. You never know until you kind of do it. So really quick, I want to do a big thanks to Mr. Yarnell, Kevin Yarnell, and Liz Irwin together. Look forward to Ryan Edson and Kevin doing it next year, but it was good that he had an opportunity to get in there and see it get done with a pro who's been doing it for a long time. Big shoes to fill, these two people. And they're doing, so far Kevin's doing a great job. I also just wanted to thank some parent volunteers. I did it in the newsletter, but I just wanted to, these people spend so much time and effort, by the way, not only being with us those two days, but organizing activities and things in advance. Kristen Calafala, Nina Vitale, Beth Imperato, and Ken Scatagird, our wonderful SROs, they've always volunteered their time in the last couple of years. Mr. Brian Mastroni, he donates his time, not only his time both days, and by the way, frees himself up for both the rain date and the regular date, but also he owns a giant inflatable pirate ship and he mans it the entire time he's there. So I just wanted to thank him as well. And certainly the countless other parents who volunteered their time to just be with us. They spent time either, I know many of them come to be with their kids, but they do a lot more than just hang out with their own child. And they help the teachers, they help the classes. It's a lot of movement. It's an awesome day, but it's, it's really an intense day. And luckily, I was able to spend a lot of time out K-2 because I was principal for the day. So got out there in all my garb, soaking wet, attacking the kids, doing slides, and some really good videos, but they're out there. A lot of fun. Great, two wonderful days, a lot of planning. Also, as I mentioned, the whale watch, the groups were going on their whale watch last time I mentioned. We did have the first group leave on June 4th, second group on June 11th. And all reports claimed a real banner year this year as far as specifically with sightings of whales. And also, you know, one of the highlights, the first group saw so many mothers and their babies that they actually couldn't move the boat for quite a while because they were so surrounded. I got some amazing pictures from the second group. Kathy Younger sent me some texts that were absolutely, I mean, out of the water, the whole thing. So now that I'm assistant principal, maybe I can, I'd like to try to join them maybe next year, at least in a day or so.
Oh, congrats.
Getting a lot of pressure for that, too. But I'd really love to see the trip. Spend so much time in the background. So hopefully it's something we can take care of, take advantage of next year. Also, another annual event, Grade 3 Rail Trail Bike Trip was Friday, June 20th. Again, had amazing weather, like 72 degrees, no humidity, it was outstanding. Another trip I'd really like to try to tape. I also wanted to thank Kathy Barpulis, Man of Flesh Hour, and the students who are part of the CLS Yearbook staff. Once again, they produced another great yearbook to memorialize the 13, 14 school year. Very appropriate cover there. Some cool shortcuts, some maps on that picture. Thank you for your kind words, sir. Kindergarten graduation was this morning. It was a great event. Very, I try to come up with a term to describe the groups of students every year. It's usually not hard because, you know, very often, not only in my experience, but like each cohort of students, I guess, they have a certain kind of description about them, a certain way about them. This year, very spirited group. And I got a lot of laughs when I said that because it can go either way, but in a very good way, in a very good way. There's a lot of, a lot of energy, you know, work together, equal boys and girls, not so boy heavy or girl heavy, but very spirited group, a lot of fun. And that was just a great event. I enjoyed it. It's one of my favorite days of the year. With that, a few upcoming events. Grade 5 Moving Up Ceremony is in fact in this building, starting at 8:30 with some refreshments. It's the second year. I want to thank these gentlemen also for letting us use their space. We did it last year for the first time, it worked out beautifully, we're going to do it again this year. And in addition, for our third year in a row, offering space to Young Rhinebeck Summer Program as they partner with Bard students to work with ESL and AAS students at Chancellor pretty much throughout the month of July, a couple days a week, several hours. I believe it's our third year, like I said, it's been a great, it's been the last two great group of people. We work with them, obviously, our after-school program in LLL, and this is just really an extension of it. And a few years ago, they really, in addition to the after-school, approached me about, well, last year approached me about including AAS students, so we've been doing it after a couple of years, and I think it just works great. Teachers will be in throughout the summer to continue working on curriculum work, curriculum code, yeah, curriculum projects. And in addition, as we always do, it looks different kind of each year, but we have a library summer reading incentive to encourage reading over the summer. And whether students read or read too, depending on the age, they'll, they'll leave on Thursday, the last day of school with, with reading records. And there's actually reading suggestions from students on the library website under summer reading. There's also information about e-books, so students can access them throughout the library over the summer. And there'll be a prize for every student that returns a reading record with reading medals. And then certainly, as always, we kind of tally them up and give a prize to one of the classes that do it, I'm usually involved in some sort of celebration with them. So that's what's happening.
Very good. A lot happening. Any questions, comments? Thanks very much, as always.
Thank you.
Actually, you know, I'm just going to say the one thing I always say, can you mention the pictures from the whale watch?
Yeah.
I feel like that's just one thing that would be great to have on the website.
Most of it.
Like, if it could be on the front page, probably, a picture.
It's not the worst idea in the world.
Reaching out, pretty awesome.
We have, we have people that can send it, and it's not too hard to do it.
Yeah, maybe talk to Steve.
Send it to Mr. Chancellor.
John, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Hard to believe that we're already at the end of the school year. So I'm going to lead tonight's report with a kind of a good news, bad news item. The bad news is that 2014, spring of 2014 marked the end of a year at BMS. And this is the first year in my time here, and I know it predates me by many, many years, that seventh grade students did not do expo. A number of curriculum changes that have taken place over the course of the, you know, past couple of years, the idea that we needed to go in a different direction, utilize some of the resources that we have available to us. So the good news and the flip side of that is that our seventh grade students this year completed a project in Mr. Frischmanet's classes utilizing all of the new technology here in the library. And it's really the first extensive research project that middle school students have done utilizing that new technology. They were researching and studying the Civil War and in turn created short documentary films. Used all of our iMovie technology, all the cameras, dressed up, a lot of props. I think we had some reported sightings because we did have students that had, you know, were walking around with wooden guns. And I think from far down the hallway, it looked like Mr. Frischmanet and his militia were attacking the school. But the end result of the entire project was pretty impressive. And the final week of school, I had an opportunity to view many, if not all, of the documentaries that the students produced. But, you know, in Mr. Frischmanet's grand plans, he always has a grand plan, you know, he's looking ahead to the future, hoping that at some point in the future, all of these short documentaries will, will be able to be compiled. And each group of students will take a piece and they'll create a full-length documentary movie on the precursors to the Civil War. So it was an exciting project. Just running through a couple of end of the year events. On June 13th, BMS students performed at Barnes &amp; Noble as part of the band fundraiser. We don't yet know how much money that's netted us because online sales continue. However, the turnout was excellent and the student performances were very impressive. In support of our ongoing Madagascar collaboration, the BMS Anthropology Club held in our village's fundraiser an informational session as part of Rhine Cliff Waterfront Day on June 14th. The fundraiser, in addition to a couple of very sizable donations, nearly, netted us nearly $7,000. That money is going to be used in support of this ongoing project. We're not entirely sure how yet, but we're really excited at the possibilities and excited about all the support from outside organizations that this project is getting. As I believe I reported last month, we're using the events this spring, you'll recall that we had, we had performers from Zara Ana, Broadway actors here with us, working with our students about a month or so ago. We also had Dr. Patricia Wright, that came in and spoke to our sixth and seventh grade students. So we have a number of individuals this summer that are going to be writing some curriculum and creating, creating some programming and with the hope of creating something sustainable, sixth through eighth grade, that will begin with a half-day program in the fall. So we're very excited about that. Last Thursday, BMS held its annual moving up ceremony in Ice Cream Social. I think this was the first year, you know, we provide little utters for everyone who shows. And, you know, typically, I think I buy 200 of them, and I've always had a couple of boxes left over. This year, we were wiped out with probably about 20 minutes left. So it was standing room only. We had a fantastic turnout. The BMS teachers were a little disappointed, they didn't have utters the next day. But we were, we were very excited by the number of people that came to the moving up ceremony this year. We, those of you, if one of you that was there, we did change the structure a little bit this year, based on some parent feedback that we've received, have received over the course of the past couple of years. We had all students up on the stage, we had a transition, you know, one of the big highlights is the video at the end. And, you know, we had to find a way to transition students from the stage down into the seats. We were able to do that with just minor confusion. So it was exciting, a lot of very positive parent feedback. This year also marked the introduction of the Claudio Coppola Student Leadership Award on behalf of the Claudio Paris Foundation. And just of special note, we had 24 students this year that I was able to honor with Student Achievement Awards. 22 of whom made the honor roll, getting a B in every single one of their classes, every single semester or every single quarter, all three years throughout their entire tenure in the middle school. And two that were able to say the same about the A honor roll. Very impressive. What's the largest group of students that I've been able to honor in that, in that manner during the moving up ceremony. Last Friday, we held our annual Field Day. You know, as Brett said, we were very lucky, the perfect day. And again, a lot of thank yous go out to our PT SO, to our Building Level Planning Team, to all of the parents that really took part, took time out of their busy days to come and share some time with us. It was a fantastic experience, it's a lot of fun. It was Ms. Lyons who sent me a kind of a list of quotes, quotes that she heard throughout the day, or heard in the car on the way home. And it was just, you know, everything from, I didn't know Mr. Pennants wore shorts. Wow, Mr. Fallon is a really good sport. All up and down the line. But it was really a nice opportunity for teachers and students to have some fun side by side and see each other in a different light. A great day in this school year. And cycle, cycle renewing itself last night was our fifth grade parent orientation. And as we've done for quite some time now, although the years are beginning to run together for me, so I didn't realize, we've been doing this as long as we have been, but we invited 10 of our sixth grade students, or now seventh grade students, to come back and join us. They kind of presented to parents the day in life of a sixth grader and did a really nice job. They were kind of the hit of the show. They answered questions, they served as tour guides afterwards, and it was a really nice, it was a nice experience for them. Again, the feedback that I got from parents was very positive. And then just one final note, I know that I mentioned this in my last report last month, but in an effort to provide parents with some more, education may not be the right word, but to connect parents to community resources that may be able to provide them with some information that would be helpful as their children come into the middle school and on up through toward high school. We have put out a parent survey, just talking a little bit about the types of information that they feel that they might need a little bit more of. And what we'd like to do in the fall, what we intend to do in the fall, is to pilot three developmentally appropriate, age-appropriate, and grade level-specific programs at a half-an-hour presentation, presentation each, and they'll take place from between 6:00 and 6:30 prior to our traditional opening house course. So we're excited about that. I sent six, seventh, and eighth grade parents that survey via email yesterday. I've already gotten 10 to 12 responses. We also presented it to our fifth grade parents last night and got quite a number of responses that are spot on.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Comments?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, John.
Well, I thought I'd share some facts and figures, if I could, regarding this school year. We recognize at Rhinebeck High School 172 students in our Student of the Month program. 32 students have been recognized with a Rhinebeck Respect Award. At our Academic Awards Night, 77 awards were presented to 150 recipients. To use a little SED lingo, that's a duplicated count because we had a student or two who had multiple awards. We didn't have 150 students on stage, we had about 100 on stage, but 150 times students were recognized. At our Athletic Awards Night, 47 senior plaques were awarded. And I want to note that that represents the fact that over half of our seniors participate for at least one season in an interschool athletic activity during their senior year, which speaks a lot about our athletic program and our extracurricular program. Also had 11 senior individual awards. As we wrapped up the end of the school year with Mr. Berg's assistance, for the fourth year, we administered a senior exit survey to our graduating seniors. They take this or voluntarily take it during a PE class towards the end of the school year. Mr. Berg and I reviewed the results of the senior exit survey, and we use that in our building of a planning team to plan objectives and activities for the upcoming school year. Similarly, on May 30th, as I mentioned earlier, the Building Level Planning Team with the support of the PT SO hosted a welcome back barbecue for last year's graduating seniors. And we had 20 students take us up on our offer and fill out an exit survey, which the BLPT will process and use for a future planning. And as I spoke a little bit informally with the BLPT members, we thought that that was the critical mass that we needed to try it again next year, hopefully reach out and get more students back in to say hello and help us with our plan. In addition, we'll send a similar version of the survey via email to other graduating seniors from last year to solicit their input. On June 12th, the day before Senior Recognition Day, which is June 13th, of course, with the help of the Guidance Department and the senior class, we piloted a Future Plans Day. And on this day, seniors wore a herald indicating their post-Rhinebeck High School plans, whether it was going to be a profession, or military, or college. A lot of students participated, it was great to see all the places our students were going after graduation, so we're going to continue to implement that and find ways to support. We completed exams today. That might seem like small news to you, but it's big news to me and to Mr. Berg. We're expecting, side note, to have our results from the Common Core Math Regents exam given on June 3rd, expecting to have those results June 26th. Finally, we're looking ahead, as you well know, to commencement on this Saturday, June 28th at 6:00 PM. And I'm not a superstitious person, so I would say the weather looks like it's going to be great. Rain in any forecast, I can say. So we'll be in touch.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Well, I know I attended both the Academic Awards and the Athletic Awards ceremonies, and it really is impressive, the numbers of students who are recognized, and as well as I said earlier, the numbers of community groups, families that recognize our students for various accomplishments is really impressive and really just a testament to what a fantastic community we live in and how people really support education and students here. So that was just a great thing to see. Thank you. All right. Well, very good, John. Thank you for being here. Just so you know, as often you know, stay, when we get to the good news section of it, after you guys have been here, we just say what they said.
That's true.
All right. We move now onto the Board Committee reports. We have several more committees in hand. Just look in your packet, I'll start with personnel, eighteen minutes, I think, yeah, ones from May, ones from June, or May, minutes we discussed upcoming negotiations with our non-steminal employee unit. We discussed RTA concerns, we put the RTA upgrades, the tenure process, and we also addressed, discussed how the board addresses parent concerns on a variety of issues. And we began discussion about how to do that effectively. Which, as the minutes know, you know, we were at a plan, we did meet to meet with the RTA representatives to talk about that, which we would do on Monday, but we're not there at those on that now. To just follow up on those May minutes. In June, the committee also conversed with David Shaw, the school's attorney, the opponent, to get more thorough discussion on changes to education law regarding annual professional performance review, how the board needs to systematically review tenure candidates, and some discussion of the Danielson rubric and how that operates. And basically, sort of the performance evaluations in general, deep purview of evaluators for your student. So we had a discussion with our attorney around that, talked a little bit about superintendent standards for performance. And we talked further about wanting to improve that, have that conversation with RTA leadership around communication and tenure processes, as well as addressing parent complaints. So as well, I know there was some questions here. We wanted David to review sort of board personnel policies. And he affirmed that those policies were consistent with education law. Does anyone have any questions? Finally, any questions? All right. Then we'll move on to our policy committee. And those minutes, whatever's more.
Yes. So we discussed, we had several discussions, actually. First, we started with items that we were following up on from previous meetings. There's several policies that we've looked at and were waiting for opinions from council or, you know, guidance from the administrative team. We then moved on to a review of the policy book, which we started this year. I think we've made considerable progress, and we've made it through the first two sections of the policy book. There were several, actually four policies, that we're still waiting for some comments on those. And also policies that were in the development process. And then we also reviewed another probably dozen or so policies, with just one policy has a couple of minor revisions that will be forthcoming. And the rest, where there were no suggestions for improvements. For next year, we're looking at, working on the meal charging policy, which we started earlier this year, a policy on borrowing of district equipment, another review of the concerns policies, and continued review of the policy manual.
Very good. I want to commend the policy committee. I'm going through a lot of policies this year. I appreciate that. I don't like that. Any questions for that committee?
Actually, I don't know if you want to wait, that's just an item away, but one of the policies we discussed in the meeting was Policy 310 about evaluation of school board operational practices, procedures. And you had raised some questions about what that meant. So do you want to hold off on following up on that?
Well, I hear it's an agenda item coming up. Yeah. Definitely want to talk about that.
Okay.
And I appreciate your comment. Okay. Any other questions? Then we'll move on to curriculum. And those minutes are Diane's.
Curriculum, we first talked a little bit about the new social studies framework. It's coming from the state. And there's going to be, the most effect will be for the high school, the ninth and 10th grade course. So there are going to be, that there could be some changes there, not as much in the middle school. The next thing we talked about was the Project Lead the Way grant from our last meeting. There was a question about specifics on that grant and the committee's role in going through that. When we talked about that grant, there's already a process in place for grant review through Marvin, and Joe, and Tom, and the building principal when grants come in. So the committee doesn't really go into details of any grant that we get. We don't go over those for a variety of reasons, one of which is time. We only meet once a month. But there's already a process in place for that. That being said, the question that was brought up about the robotics in that, in that grant, the Project Lead the Way, they requested the other type of robotics, and the administrator felt that that's the program they have. It's a strong program, and they would go ahead and use those robotics. The ones that we already have in the building, you know, possibly down the road, they'll be able to use them in some way. But, you know, right now, we're going to go with the program as requested by the Project Lead the Way people. You know, we talked a little bit more about what our committee, what the role is for the committee, what we should be doing. You know, pretty much Marvin and Joe will inform the committee about changes they've made or things they'd like to implement. And the committee has a chance to ask questions, of course, and go over things and bring anything from the questions that we have to discuss or go into detail about. But it's not a place where we're going to go into detail about things that have already been done by, whether it's our teachers or administrators. The next, we were joined by Mr. Aristoc, who was updating us on the work of the Health and Wellness Committee. And he spent a lot of his time talking about a great project that they're going to have coming up in the fall. It's kind of a parent information session they're going to have for the high school and middle school first in the fall, and then hope to have one in the spring. They've identified three topics that they want to address. And they're kind of like a mini workshop for parents, that they can come and attend these. One will be on nutrition. It'll talk about our cafeteria and nutrition in general, the new government, the changes from the government. One will be on drugs, kind of focusing on the not-my-kid idea. And then another one will be on mental health, like body image, peer pressure. And parents will have the opportunity to go to all of these sessions in the fall. And it looks like it's going to be a great, they're putting a lot of work into this. It's going to be a great thing and could possibly be expanded on. I'm sure there's lots of topics parents are interested in. So it's a lot of work that they're doing. He just talked, just short, he was in between class, so he didn't have a lot of time, about the cafeteria. The surveys have gone out to the BMS students. It's going to be online for parents, staff, and grade 10 through 12 to fill out the survey about the cafeteria. And the committee will go over those surveys. You know, his own thoughts were that the cafeteria, the food has been improving with changes that they've been making, but we didn't get to talk about that a lot. And next year, we'll have to talk more about the K through 12 curriculum, where that is. Marvin gave us an update on the Curriculum Governance Council. You can see in your packet, there's a more detailed information about how it's coming together, on how it's going to work. You know, hopefully, it will be in place by the fall, next year, the end of the fall. Possibly, there's going to be applications and interviews for staff to be a part of that council. We had a technology update. Next year, there won't be a computer lab at Chancellor. This will be all done as immersion in the classroom. The current computer teacher will be working, assisting the different classroom teachers as needed. And we talked a little bit about how that will shift eventually up into the middle school and how that will affect the classes there. And then the last thing we touched on was summer curriculum work. There's a lot of work being done by our teachers this summer, as there was last year. It's kind of listed here, what work they're going to be doing, but just as last year, a tremendous amount of work that's going to be done again this year by our staff.
Very good. A very big question for that meeting. Any questions or comments?
Just have a quick comment. Joe, can, do you have any idea when Dave was going to try to get that parent survey about the cafeteria out? It hasn't gone as yet.
I had the impression that was supposed to go out soon. Do you have any?
No, I don't know. I know Dave has the information. I'll follow up with him.
Yeah, because it's on the website, but he was going to send something out so people knew.
I didn't know where it was on the website. I didn't find it. So if we could follow up with that, that would be great.
I'll follow up with Dave on that.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Diane. We move on now to finance.
I did those minutes. We discussed the financing of the wireless project that the board approved, the proposal for at the previous meeting. If you recall, there was an issue of how the district was going to pay for the project since the final proposal came in above the money that the district had budgeted for it. I'm not going to repeat what's in the minutes, but actually, since we were waiting for Tom to come back to us with some information, after having a conversation with Carousel that he was anticipating having the next day, maybe I'll turn it over to him.
Basically, what they've asked before they'll give me a final rate is to fill out the application. So that's been submitted. Waiting to hear back from them as to what that finance rate would be based on our application. Hopefully, I'll know in the next few days. And once I know, I will send it up to the current finance committee to let them know what that is.
All right. So then I assume that we'll continue to discuss that. And there'll be a proposal made to the board at some point in the near term. The technology installment purchase agreement is also described in the minutes. And we have a proposal that we're going to be voting on this evening on the agenda. But the, this is to implement the district's tech plan, which Steve Jensen gave us a presentation on earlier this year. And this will be to put in place the technology hardware for K through 2 and Chancellor. And next year, we will be doing something similar for 3 to 5. And then subsequent two years will be at the middle school and the high school. And then the last thing that we talked about was a municipal innovation summit that Tom participated in, which was very interesting and sobering in terms of what we, as well as many other districts, are looking at in terms of how we are going to fulfill the governor's expectation that we cut the property taxes of our community members going forward. And it's going to be very interesting to see how that develops, particularly over the course, this year is pretty much set, but over the course of the next few years, it's going to be extremely interesting to see what we're going to have to do and how we're going to do it. That's it.
All right. Very good. Any questions for these committee? All right. So everyone, five minutes of the session.
These are the separate minutes. Tom spoke with us about going back and visiting the building use fee schedule, which we don't have details of today, but simply to reevaluate how much different kinds of groups are being charged to use the facilities, particularly the auditorium. Certain kinds of services, such as changes to the thrust stage, are extremely labor-intensive, bordering on, you know, dangerous for the people performing them. And we really want to look at how often that is going to be done, and if so, what would be charged. Members of the committee agreed that the fee schedule will be brought back with recommendations to the full board at the reorganization meeting in July. So with some suggestions for us to talk about as a group. We heard an update on the wireless project, that work will be beginning in earnest by the end of the month, by the end of June. And of course, Steve Jensen and Sheldon Teeter will have to be working closely with one another as that process unfolds over the summer. An RFP will be posted for an architect to undertake the building condition survey, which will be due in January of 2016. And Tom also posed the idea that perhaps someone on the facilities committee might want to be involved in selecting that architect. He'll be in touch with us, or whoever is on this group moving forward. Also, there was a report from Sheldon about discussions in the safety committee about the question of use of video cameras in the middle school and high school.
Can you speak in a little more detail to that last issue? How did that come up as a concern? What's the, what's the safety committee talking about in terms of installing video cameras?
We didn't get a real full report. Simply, we were given the heads up that something would be coming. I don't know if you know more about it, Tom.
No, I don't. Just wanted to discuss.
Yeah, I talked, actually, I talked to Ed about that today. And what the middle school, high school safety committee did is distribute a number of the topics that came up to subgroups of that committee to either do some research on or put together some recommendations as they had discussed. So I expect we'll get them sometime over the summer. When we get the specifics, we'll bring it to your attention. It's coming to the, whatever we would get would be coming as a recommendation. Anything we do would be entirely the purview of the board. We would want to obviously review those administratively, and where there may be price tags associated to any of that. We know we haven't budgeted for, for any large, you know, infrastructure issues related to safety. So we would likely not happen until the following school year, at the earliest, should we decide to go down whatever road they suggested we go.
In terms of discussions with the safety committee in advance of whatever presentation they're going to make to the facilities committee, I'd at least be interested in knowing about what prompts them to be making a recommendation that they're making, to make sure that they're focusing on that as well.
All right. So we'll hear from, you know, Will and Inspector.
Yeah, so they get something you'll go ahead.
Any other questions for the facilities? All right. Very good. Very busy month, or all March days. Our next report and our discussion item is a review of our 2013, 14 workovers or goals as we adapt them or inter pack in, along with sort of supplementary document that includes strategies for meeting our goals. You know, I think as we look through the four goals, one is on curriculum and the Common Core, one number two is the communication, three about the downpour, four, improving our food service. I think we can see that some of our goals have been met. And I want to highlight that in fact, our support for meeting these goals is one issue, but the implementation of these goals is really two for the gentleman in my right and his staff. So that's an important item. But of course, I think as we look at a couple of the items, a big thing that we were able to do this year that meant the communication and technology goals were higher than the technology and communication, that has helped move us along, both trying to improve communication, certainly improve our technology infrastructure and develop a plan to meet larger technology goals. So having to see that we moved along in that in a really significant way. I could go through some of these as well, but I just want to think of the possibility of other members of the board just like to comment on how we feel if we are meeting goals or not meeting goals.
I mean, I agree with you that we've done pretty well in meeting a number of the goals that we've had, at least partially or fully. Of course, the one area where we fell short was the food service goal, which has proved to be a more difficult nut to crack than, I guess, certainly I anticipated when I first joined the finance committee. And I'm just wondering, and especially since we're going to be talking about goals in the anticipated upcoming workshop, if we can focus on finding a way to formulate goals around this, which I think we're all in agreement is something that we need to tackle effectively, to formulate goals that are specific enough to allow us to make some progress. You know, I wouldn't say that the finance committee was flailing. I don't think that's accurate. But I do think that we were not that efficient in finding solutions. And I know that that's partly the reason why the board was not able to. I know that that's partly the reason why the Board was not able to find solutions. Put it out there that that's something that we should really plan to make a priority in terms of our goal formulation process for this coming year.
Oh, I agree with what Lisa said, but I think the food service goal is quite an ambitious goal, and I think that it might be helpful next year, if we want to continue to have that as a goal, that we might want to break it up into, you know, some smaller parts so that, you know, if we want to increase participation in the food service program, or if we want to have it become profitable, or, you know, lose less money, but, you know, those are -- sometimes those things don't necessarily go together, so I think we want to, you know, continue that as a goal, we probably should think about, you know, breaking it up to make it, make parts of it that are closer to meeting our goal.
I think we have, and what I mean, we mostly are administrators, have made a lot of progress on, you know, the first three goals here, and, you know, it's good to point out that this isn't the only thing that anyone works on all year. It'd be nice if it were. But yeah, I guess with the food service, I agree with you, it should maybe break it into chunks, or it would be nice if maybe we could do like a five-year plan or something. I mean, it isn't something that you can fix in one year. It has been something we've been talking about for many years already, but, you know, maybe if we can come up with like a five-year plan that maybe breaks it into chunks, or ways to get to that goal, might be a way to tackle it.
Yeah, it's always, you know, this discussion we've had, right, about how specific to be in goals, or do we want to set or ask for operational goals, so it is important to sort of look at these and say whether we need them or not, or, and of course, in collaboration with Joe, because he's the one who does implement them. But I am struck by that, when you look at the document and the strategies, that some of those other pieces really did, you know, the specifics were to come to fruition in certain ways, so that under curriculum and Common Court, one of the strategies is to encourage and support opportunities for ongoing faculty collaboration and access to professional development in both curriculum content and instructional delivery. And, you know, I think we've been able to continue to support a couple of projects, one of which is on the agenda for tonight, for faculty professional development, and of course, thanks to continued support from the Public Science Foundation as well as another, Venus, the PTSO. Additionally, our new contract with the RTA will add six more hours for professional development, and we had fruitful discussions with the RTA on how that, those hours would be implemented, which actually dovetails with one of the communication strategies, which is to explore new opportunities for meaningful growth in dialogue. So I think through dialogue with the RTA, we were really able to kind of come up with a plan for professional development that adds some time, the way that I think we met the needs of both, you know, some goals the district and the Public Teachers Association had. Also, expanding educational opportunities for students through improved budget development here again tonight, as was pointed out earlier, thanks to a lot of work and leadership at High School, to provide really, you know, more opportunities for students is just really impressive. And again, our technology infrastructure, so I think as well in communication, our contact with our board regions, SED staff and state legislators, I think our continued discussions with Senator Gibson have been really fruitful and to continue this collaboration. So, you know, how this goes forward in terms of specificity or aspirations, I think just as long as we're all on the same page about it and realistic goals, it's always a challenge year by year. It's good to take a moment to reflect and go, okay, well, actually, some of the specific strategies really did happen, you know.
I just want to add that in a year of particular uncertainty and instability in the climate around the rollout of the Common Court standards, different kinds of communications that came from the State Education Department, the whole kind of process of districts at the grassroots level, and then in larger ways through professional associations responding to those changes, that really has been a kind of a very dynamic landscape in this past year, and I think that with the guidance of our administrators, there's been an attempt really to respond to those challenges, and it's actually an evolving process. So, you know, the curriculum, when parents or others are interested in knowing what the curriculum looks like based on these kind of changes, that is coming into being and should be more apparent, I think, moving forward next year. So I think, given the high degree of change that's been going on in public schooling this year, there's been tremendous work done by all parts of the district, and I hope that that's visible in a way to -- people weren't as close to these conversations as maybe we tend to be.
Yeah, I would say, I think that's a really important point, is that, you know, I have said this before, that I feel like we're at a place where we've weathered a lot of, you know, being at meetings, say, three or four years ago, where it's, what is the state want from us, and, you know, our Director of Curriculum Instruction is trying to even just figure out what all the massive changes mean, much less try to communicate that effectively to everyone else in the district. And now we're at a point where I think we've kind of started to sort of kind of put in place certain new ideas, new ways of operating, curriculum that have gotten us to a steadier ground in terms of responding to the many demands, and I do want to really commend the work of Joe Phelan and his administrative staff in getting us to a place where we're just sort of more comfortable with these many demands. Not that they don't go away, or not that any of this, all these goals are sort of being ongoing, you know, but that's an important thing to recognize. Any other questions or comments or observations or thoughts about sort of when we want to develop goals for the year?
I don't know if we have a calendar for it, but I would just put my plug again that we do it as quickly as we can, just so that we can, you know, it's better, easier for Joe and his staff as soon as we can get our thoughts together, so. I don't know what that looks like, but.
Schedule a board goals workshop.
Yeah, just in terms of moving forward, I am incredibly encouraged by the thrust of the communication that's coming from Joe and Steve Jensen and the work that they are going to undertake this summer on looking at the website and finding new ways to be able to communicate better and more consistently with our stakeholders. I would love to see that as something that we continue to look on in the 2014, 15 year. It's really great work.
So did we talk, we talked about the scheduling of board meetings over the summer. Did we talk about how we were going to schedule a workshop on boards?
I was charged with picking a handful of dates and seeing if I could pull a proverbial rabbit out of my hat and find a date that all seven of you plus I could attend.
We haven't communicated with you, are like any vacation schedules though, right?
No, you haven't, and I thought that would come out as you reacted to things that I put out there. Fortunately, I guess, and unfortunately for me, I'll be here on January of July, so, and in keeping with the comment that Diane made, the sooner the better, I think that we can get that. So I'll, between now and our reorg meeting, I'll be throwing out a handful of dates, and for my part, they're really random dates, because I can be available pretty much any time. The trick is going to be to work around your various, you know, in-town and out-of-town schedules in July to see if we can find a date. If we're going to do, to undertake that process without bringing an outside facilitator in to do that, which we have done other years, and I think rather successfully, that'll be one less person's schedule that we have to coordinate, so we're coordinating eight schedules as opposed to nine, so we're pretty much wide open based on what your vacation schedules are. But I, that was a task I'd planned for myself, once we get through this rather busy week for us anyway, getting everything ready for graduation, so we'll be checking your emails next, early next week, throw some dates out, try to narrow it as best we can.
Okay, great. Anything else to add? All right, very good. Now, on to annual review of our operational procedures, which thanks to the Policy Committee has identified this policy that I did not know existed and that we've never done, so for a least in a formal way. So the notes from the Policy Committee had some thoughts on what that would mean. Our operational procedures, I was trying to find right on. What that means, you know, there are questions, it looks to me like, you know, certainly our committee structure is one of our operational procedures. And I happen to notice, you know, we can maybe discuss a little bit, I don't think that we're really prepared to have an old discussion about our operational procedures, but certainly could entertain any comments. I was struck by the Policy Committee notes that said, maybe we want to see that our current procedures are working, and whether we'd want to consider a BOE committee secretary, which this month certainly would have been useful, because there are pages and pages of committee notes. I don't know what that would really look like, because that is certainly something that the board committees take on themselves, is to just rotate, take minutes. Did the Policy Committee want to, or anyone else want to kind of reflect a little bit on this?
We did talk a little bit in the Policy Committee about what such an evaluation would entail, because the policy, as you'll see in item 4.4 in the packet, is extremely undetailed. It's, I think that there are things that we do that would fall under the rubric, like what we just did, going through the board goals touches on a number of operational areas, so, and then there are other things that we do during the course of the year that would also fall under, you know, the facilities tour, and, you know, the reflections of the various committees on their actions, which are reported in the minutes. I mean, I don't think that there's anything magical that we must do unless we agree to to satisfy this policy, but we should do something each year, or we should reevaluate whether we should have a policy like this. And maybe the thing to do for this year, since it's something that we're at least rediscovering as a board, is to acknowledge that this is an area we could be more proactive in and have some conversations, and maybe this summer's the time to do it, as to what would make sense for an annual review, an annual evaluation of the board. This is the Board's operations, not the district's in general.
I was poking around on the NISBA website based on this, and they have a university webinar, a NISBA University webinar, about board self-evaluation that's been archived. I don't know how much it costs to purchase those webinars for review, but it might lead us in ways that are appropriate for school boards to police themselves. I think to me, this is kind of just like what we did, is do with the goals, it's time of the year to just think about, you know, how the committees worked, you know, anything that we do, like, does it work or does it not work? And then, you know, if there is something that comes up, I guess that's the time to go deeper into like fixing those. I think Diane had a comment last time about maybe changing the agenda to show more detailed committee meetings, like that would be something that would come up in this kind of review, like a suggestion of that, and, you know, something like that would obviously have to go to the Policy Committee, because there's a policy about that. So, you know, things like that. Myself, the only thing that I had thought of in our committee meetings, last year, we would assign like a committee chair, and this year, I don't know that we didn't really do that, and I don't know if that's something we think is more helpful. You know, I just, in policy, was thinking of it, because, you know, sometimes in different committees, there's things you work on that need other things, or you have to get back to it, and maybe if there was a committee chair, then that person would be responsible for remembering that, or, you know, things that come up in this meeting, they have to go back there, so just maybe something that we have got away from, or maybe we should get back to.
I mean, de facto, for most of the committees, I think Joe serves as the committee chair because he's taking the notes of the things that we say we want to have happen.
Well, I'm taking notes to operationalize what you thought about.
Right, exactly.
And the chair. Yeah, and this is, and this is a good conversation for us to have going forward, because I don't, I don't see my role there as the chair. I see my role there as the resource for the committee, but again, we can talk about that and land on a way we think should work best, or we'd like to try that maybe is a little different than the way we've been operating, and I think that that's, this is an opportunity to talk about things we might want to do the same, or things we might want to do differently going forward. And I would also point out that it doesn't just have to be what we do in, you know, in groups as committees, you know, I think there are things that are individual, you know, the way individuals on the Board conduct their business, and it may just be in terms of reminders, but, you know, like, people come and prepare at the board meetings having read their board packet, and, you know, just basic things that it doesn't hurt to go over and kind of refresh it for everybody, and when you have new board members, they need to be, you know, kind of enculturated into the way it works. There's a lot there, we don't have to spend five hours having this discussion either, but I think it's worth stepping back and saying, how do we operate from board meeting to board meeting, and what would make our operations more efficient?
So I would even maybe recommend that the Policy Committee maybe think of a way to just even bullet point, or just, you know, if you take the time to go through, like, what are something like facilities tour, board committees taking minutes? There is a, there is a policy on new board member training, I believe, you know, maybe reviewing how we elect leadership or leadership. If it was enumerated in this policy, then when there's your annual review, people even know what to think about, because it's the first time we're thinking about it. So I would just, like, that would be something I would be encouraged the Policy Committee to do, sort of add to this, to give it some substance, so we know what we're reviewing. Because another issue that actually I think came up during the, it may or may not be a part of this particular policy, was a recommendation earlier, I don't know if there was a previous meeting, whether it was considered sort of informal or really embedded in policy to ask board members to, currently say board members, to notify the rest of the Board whether they're intending to run again when their, when their term expires. So that would be something that could or would not be included in the procedure, obviously, that could be a recommendation. So my suggestion is to ask the Policy Committee to sort of expand on what this looks like, so that the next time we do this, we know what we're doing. And I would, chairs thing, because that will come up again as soon as we recommit these committees, you know, I would recommend that each committee evaluate that based on their own. It can be, it can be useful, I think that the best use of a chair's time is to sort of help the agenda along. Some committees, the way we have worked, we sort of informally, it's kind of working well. Chairs, as meetings shift and people change, can, you need them sometimes, you just don't have time for them. So I would just encourage each committee, we at this point, to evaluate where they need it. So thanks for bringing this to our attention.
Learned a lot in policy. You learn a lot in policy.
All right, very good. We'll move on now to the comment section of our agenda, and we have good news. I said we foresee a lot of good news from our principals this evening. Does anyone else have good news? Diane?
Mr. Ken. Mr. Kinnison did touch on field day, but I just wanted to point out that it was so nice of our administrators and staff to, in the middle of their day, go into the dunking booth to be dunked by students and staff. It was enjoyed by everyone.
Most everyone.
Almost everyone. But it's a great chance for the students to see another side of everyone. And Mr. King came up, which thrilled the sixth graders who hadn't seen them, and Mr. Fallon was there, which was delightful for everyone.
Again, maybe another photo for the web.
I do happen to have a few of those photos.
I just want to second what Diane has said, and so often, our conversations about how we think about the success of our schools, we focus on, you know, things like tests or, you know, very quantifiable things, and I think that the end of the year celebrations that we see at all of our schools, chancellor, BMS, and the high school, it's such a tangible way of experiencing the community between the students and, and their teachers. It's really moving, actually, and it makes you realize so much of what education is about is more than, you know, the kinds of things that we put into a report to the state education department. It's about this place and this community. So it's, it's really a phenomenal thing to see, and how giving everyone is in the school in making this happen.
And, you know, I'd like to, on that same note, just report, and especially Dr. Edward Porter, because here this evening, that I've really noticed, again, the way you have approached in high school managing the energy of seniors as they come to the end of school year. And I really, you know, maybe I shouldn't say yes. But, you know, the various undertakings of senior recognition day, and, you know, giving some room to express themselves energetically within parameters that aren't due to tangential people or things. I just think that, you know, by entering their space of their enthusiasm, where they are in their life, and giving them some room, you know, let's hope it maintains a sort of mutual respect and understanding. But I, you know, I've just observed a really, you know, great way to just try not to be entirely communicative, but just sort of acknowledge the energy within certain parameters.
Sometimes I don't know who's managing whom.
All right, very good. Any other good news? All right, then we move on to old business. Yes, I, before you say that, I'll send out an email from this, between now and before July, on committee preferences. That will certainly lead to a return, and we can get that done. Any other items under old business?
For graduation on Saturday, what time would you like us to join you?
Graduation starts at six sharp. I mean, if you're there between a half an hour and 15 minutes before, I mean, it should be plenty of time. Depending how sunny it is, you might want to come later than early, or be your sunglasses.
Bug spray?
I've never had an issue with bugs at all.
With bugs?
Bug spray is.
Something to worry about.
All right, anything else under old business? We move on to another opportunity for public comment. All right, so we'll move on to other, do you have any items or others?
So in my role as president of the Rhinebeck Alumni Association, we had our annual dinner on June 14th, and over 100, approximately 120 people were there at the Beak Farners for our dinner, and I had the pleasure of leading two tours for alumni on Saturday and Sunday of that weekend. And I would like to thank, you know, the alumni were extremely impressed by our school. I would like to thank Sheldon Teeter and Joe for opening up the building, so that we could actually provide the tour for them. They were impressed by, you know, all the new things in the school, the technology, the science labs. We took them down to the technology lab. They were given a demonstration on Saturday by Bobby Blumer and on Sunday by Mary Fleishour of the Smart Ward. And it's, it's really wonderful to have the alumni come back to the school and, you know, see what's going on. The majority of the people that were in the groups were from the class of 1969 and the class of 1964, celebrating their 45th and 50th anniversaries. So it's really great to have them back to the school to see what's been going on.
That's fantastic. Thank you for your role in making all that happen. It's great.
Yeah, just, just a reminder, a number of you have indicated to us your interest in attending the annual New York State School Boards Association Conference and Convention this October in New York City. So if you've already responded to me via email that you're interested, it, my intent will be to register you. If you are interested and you haven't responded, the sooner you're able to, the better. I mean, it would be easier if we just register everybody at once instead of, instead of piecemeal. And I will also, unless you tell me otherwise, I will, I will make an assumption, it's a Monday, Monday, Tuesday. I will make an assumption that, that we'll be staying over, at least on Sunday. However, if, if you are of a mind to, to commute, which is certainly doable, given our proximity to, to New York City, please let me know. I don't want to pull rooms for people. If, if there isn't an interest in staying over, we'll have to have a discussion about what we will do for lodging, if any, from Monday night to Tuesday. It's gone from a four-day to a three-day, and I'm not, I don't have a real good handle yet on how it, how the, the activities are going to shake out. I think the most beneficial parts of that, in my opinion, are the professional development sessions that, that they run. There's really a lot of quality professional development for board members there. I'll have to get a better idea. My sense is that's going to be Monday, and so we may decide to go down Sunday, stay over, or commute back and forth, and then be there Monday. I'm not sure what's going on Tuesday, you know, whether it's worth it to stay down and/or commit to a, a third day there, but those are decisions we'll have to make soon. Regardless, if you're going, I'll have to register you, and the registration is for all three days, whether you attend all three days or not, so you don't get to pick and choose the day. It's a, you know, it's a ticket for the whole, whole agilis. So if you're interested, let me know. We want to get those registrations while they're, they're least expensive early. The price goes up as it gets closer to the, to the date, so. Just want to put out a commercial for that.
All right, thank you. Any other, other? All right, then we move on to our action items. Anything anyone wants to move to, from the consent. All right, ma'am, motion for the recommendation of the superintendent schools to approve the consent items.
So move.
By Mark.
Second.
Second by Lisa, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And a motion for the recommendation of the superintendent schools to accept grant for the chronic science foundation in the amount of $37,190,000 in support of the implementation of the extended response for science math for year two grant, as submitted by Alex Agavino, as stipulated.
So move.
By Mark.
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any questions or comments? Well, thank you to the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, once again. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools to approve the first reading and consideration of modification to board policies, 25 tenant and unit board member rating, 3111, approving the superintendent at 5300, district code.
So move.
By Mark.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools to approve the 2014-15 course of permanent waivers.
So move.
By Mark.
Second.
And to Lisa, any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And they have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools to approve the appointment of department chairs and advisors at chronic high schools for the 2014-15 school year.
So move.
By Mark.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools to approve principles of engineering, sociology, anthropology, and new courses to be offered starting in 2014-15 school year.
So move.
By Mark.
Second.
Second by Lisa, any questions or comments?
Just want to say that it's great they're going to be able to offer some more new courses.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools to approve additional summer 2014 special education, clerical, and administrative work.
So move.
By Mark.
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And a motion to approve the 2013-14 superintendent's annual performance evaluation.
So move.
By Mark.
Second.
Second by Lisa, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools to the appointment of team leaders and advisors for Bulleye Middle School for the 2014-15 school year.
So move.
By Mark.
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools to adopt the following resolution, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools and the Board of Education, hereby approves the contract with Dutchess County Bosse's for the acquisition of computer technology, hardware, software, and related equipment through a three-year installment purchase agreement, an IPA, commencing in the 2014-2015 school year, with a total principal cost of $216,559.65, and be further resolved that the Rhinebeck Center School does pay Dutchess County Bosse's through its regular monthly fiddle cycle over a three-year period, to commence during the 2014-2015 school year.
So move.
By Mark.
Second.
Second by Lisa, any questions or comments?
Tom, in, in finance, when, when we talked about this, that there was one item that you were going to ask the, the financial person at Bosse's about, about whether they would extend the payment to a four-year?
They can go four, and actually, they can go out to five years.
Because I see that this is a recommendation for three years, so can we just talk to them?
Right, so I did find out later to, this morning, actually. I had a message from Bosse's indicating that after tracking it down, we can go up to five years. It is based upon the equipment you're purchasing. So I told him what we were purchasing, and he says, we could extend it out to five years if we wished to. It really then becomes a matter of the, of determining, I mean, the longer we put it out, okay, the smaller the payments are on an annual basis.
Pay more interest rate.
Pay a little bit more interest. I'm somewhat, my concern is, and I haven't looked deeply enough ahead to next year, at the purchases that are needed to add it on top of this one, you know, then you, you know, you're going to add another one. Can this budget absorb this one-third amount of this? Yes, it's there. My concern goes to the following here, when there's more purchases that get added on top of this, and you're already paying, this one-third is going to go forward for the next two budget cycles at least. At that, adding more equipment to, at that time, it's going to become a little bit harder. I don't want to say harder, it's going to become, we now have to, we have to make sacrifices to have that equipped. To go out over five years makes that process a lot easier, and gives us more headroom to move ahead. So, like I said, we can absorb this into this one. It's really looking at two, three, four, and five years out. Financing is at a fairly cheap rate. I mean, so it's, if I could do it, I'd go out as long as I could. But also, at the same time, I've heard a lot, well, we got the money, now do it now. This one's a little bit different. Once they say, because he had to find out himself, because he'd only seen three years since he's been there, but he says, no, no, he's talked to his departments and that, and he says, we could go out four or five years, so.
So do you, are you thinking that for next year, when we are looking at it, the purchase for the three, the grades three to five, then you might be recommending financing over a different term?
I would go on over a longer term.
Okay.
Definitely.
But Mark?
Well, I, I, you know, you know, since, I only got that information this morning, I wasn't about to come here and just say, hey, guys, I'm actually kind of glad you brought it up, because my recommendation would be go to five years, to look at it that way, because, like I say, it, we will be spending a little bit more in the interest cost, but really, it's not going to be much. It's really a little help on the budgetary side as we go forward.
I'm sorry.
I should know, we're apologizing to each other. I just want to ask what the, what the interest rate is.
Well, it doesn't get set yet. He's thinking it's going to be about one and a half percent. That's what they've been getting lately, after it goes through, because they don't do actually, it goes through something Bosse's and...
Well, I mean, obviously, for the wireless project, there was a reason I wanted to make the decisions right away, but do we, do we have enough lead time on this to maybe table this resolution for this meeting?
No. Decision has to be made today.
Do I have this, this technology here before this starts?
Well, that was my question.
That, that's it. I, I do have to have this to Bosse's by June 30th, if we are to do this for September 1st, because then it would not go to their board until late August, and that just completely misses everything.
Okay.
It would be my recommendation that if we can afford to do it over three years, that we do it, because the, the technology changes so rapidly, and that if you find, the longer you finance it, you know, the longer you're going to have to keep the equipment, so that, you know, that's going to possibly be outdated by the time it's paid. So if, if it's possible to afford it over three years, I would recommend that we do that. But, you know, it's not something that we have to decide right now, but, you know, as we move forward through the project.
I mean, definitely, we could look and do this one for three years, because we do have the money to absorb it this year. It's when we look into next year's purchases for leases that we may need to go longer and extend it, you know, over a longer period. I know what you're saying, Mark, but, you know, you add this, this is going to be about a $70,000 a year lease for three years, add another.
No, I understand.
Then it becomes like, whoa, I don't know. That would mean, you know, either we have to find places to cut within the budget, or exceed the cap, or do something else. I mean, one way of doing it, taking a look at the next year, is to extend that financing for five years or four years, because what this purchase this time is for iPads and MacBooks, next year's purchase is just MacBooks. So they will definitely have at least a five-year life period, where the iPads and, you don't know. I mean, I don't.
Right.
So you're comfortable, though, obviously, this is the recommendation?
Yeah, yeah, we could definitely do three years. It's just budgeting in years two, three, and out will, gets a little bit tougher.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools to adopt the following resolution, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent Board of Education, hereby while she's wonderful time, 1.0, acting co-commander position in non-class effective July 1, 2014.
So move.
By Mark.
Second.
Second by Lisa, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools to approve the permanence and service appointment of Kristen Gibbon to the position of stenoial worker effective July 3, 2014.
So move.
By Mark.
Second.
Second by Lisa, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools to approve three-year probationary employment salary to the position of English teacher, scientific high school effective September 1, 2014, in the tenure area of English, salary step two, MA plus 30 plus 9, $63,68 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2014.
So move.
By Mark.
Second.
Second by Lisa, any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And a motion to adjourn session for discussion of the particular persons.
So move.
Second.
And by Lisa, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. That's unanimous, thank you for that.